Okay. It is Monday, November 13th at 7:02 PM. And I'd just like to do a quick roll call as we call the Eastline Planning Commission's special meeting of Monday, November 13th to order. So can we start with Rich?
Rich Gordon.
Michelle Williams.
Olivia Fairchild.
Brian Baumback.
And Olivia and Brian are our seated alternates for the night so that we have a quorum of the commission. If we could stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda for tonight?
I do have an addition.
Great.
So, yeah, I guess it will be a lot of additions, correct. Thank you. Sue has corrected me, it's a special meeting, you can have the addition to the agenda. So then I'll just note that for the commission's record that we have received an application for a subdivision at 220 Pennsylvania Avenue. So today would be marked the day of receipt.
Okay. Great. And it doesn't really need to be on the agenda because we wouldn't be discussing or acting on it.
Correct.
Okay. Fantastic. We do not have anyone here from the public, so I don't believe that there's any public delegations. But we do have some communications.
Yes, from our town clerk. It's a little packet there, there's a letter regarding planning meetings, boards and commissions, noting when members resign, you need to send notification to the town clerk when appointed to a board, commission agency, the town clerk's office just needs to be notified. So that's for your own edification. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a shout, or you may call Karen Galbo.
Great. Any questions? Okay, cool. So for zoning, Kirk and I switched, so I did, I did not attend November 2nd's meeting, but I did watch the YouTube, which is just a tremendous asset, I feel like. And it was a pretty quick meeting. They appointed Michael Foley to a vacancy that they had available. That was, that was the big news. And they are looking at some of the affordable housing data, which was from the same report that this commission was responsible for producing because they were interested in the current percentage of affordable housing in town. So they were gonna look into that a little bit more. It looks like Kirk is in for a long meeting at their next meeting, specifically because the, the last item on their minutes is Ms. Thurlow reminded the commission that the November 16th meeting would likely be a long meeting. So you'll have to check in with Kirk on that. Our ex officio is not here tonight. Any updates from, any other updates from Mr. Geishel?
I don't have any specific updates, no. I will, can comment on some of that affordable housing, because I've been working on that with our town attorney. We're looking at where we are in terms of not only percent, but of points. We have points for number of each unit, whether it's three bedroom, two bedroom, or how it's occupied. So we're breaking that all down. I will note that based on my current numbers and calculations, our percentage actually slipped backward at the end of the year, much lower than I actually anticipated, to work back closer to 5% based on what I've calculated thus far.
Okay.
Just keeping that in mind. So it's just you can't seem to keep up with the construction of new homes, so.
Understood.
I think that's where Don Poland had recommended some sort of inclusionary type zoning where you include it with every, every type of residential development. So we'd have to look at that.
Yeah. Okay. Great. No updates on the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Subcommittee, but I would strongly recommend that this team look at that in 2024 if you so desire. And then I did sign today the letter that we had discussed for, that Gary was drafting to the Board of Selectmen regarding the item that we had wanted to include in our subdivision regulations, that we were advised could not be part of the regulations and had to be a town ordinance. And that was that taxes, taxes must be paid current on the property subject to subdivision. Documentation from the tax collector indicating that the taxes are current shall be submitted. In the event the taxes are not current at the time of application, the commission shall determine the application to be incomplete and deny said application. That is our recommendation that the town adopt as an ordinance, and we shall stay tuned to see if it is or is not adopted. Lastly, just wanted to say thank you. This is my last meeting and I did not run for another term, but I just wanted to express my gratitude for how great it's been to serve on this board for the last five-plus years. And I'm really proud of what we've done together, and I look forward to continuing to participate as an active citizen and follow and support your work. So thank you. And congratulations to everyone at the table who won election for the seats that they were running for, including this commission.
I want to thank Michelle for all the support and all the guidance she's given us over the years, and we'll all miss her.
Thank you. All right. With that, approval of the minutes of October 10th. Does anyone have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from October 10th.
Fantastic. Anyone want a second?
A second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. We do not have any public hearings tonight, and we do have a pending subdivision. This is the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for Hathaway Farm LLC, a three-lot re-subdivision of approximately 4.83 acres of land, and a request for a waiver exemption from Section 6-8 of the Eastline subdivision regulations on the property located at 117 Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut, assessor's map number 35.0, Lot 23-4, also known as the Hathaway Farms subdivision. This application was received on September 12th. We opened and closed the public hearing on October 10th, and we have 65 days to render a decision which would put us to December 14th. When we last met on this, we had some discussion around the application, and we had requested that Mr. Geishel put together a memo for us of the findings that we had discussed and of his, his own findings, if they did not explicitly come up in our discussion. So I believe everybody has that, and just want to give a minute for everybody to refresh themselves, and then we can open up further discussion and potential decision. Anything to add?
I guess so. While you guys do that, I will just note, there were a couple items that were actually submitted subsequent to the public hearing. So I, I reference them, I give them exhibit item, beginning with Exhibit J, and K, and L, are the three exhibits that came in post-public hearing. But I use those for references in my memo, which explains their existence in the record. We had to kind of re-identify what was previously Exhibit K is now Exhibit N, and I believe Exhibit L is now Exhibit P. That straightened out. Given questions, I'm happy to go through my findings.
Yeah, I think the loose end was that the previous conservation easement was filed.
Yes, so to answer that, and I believe that was, if you look under the, maybe the final, one of the final wherés is where it goes through each section, every section that it has to comply with, under open space there.
6-7 there, right?
Yes. So the Exhibit C, which is the design report, indicate that this proposed open space and the amount of .672 acres was already provided for this property in Phase 1 of the Hathaway Farms subdivision. And now I'm referring to Exhibit K, this is the conservation easement. It was filed on November 8th, 2023, and it's now recorded on volume 1103, page 296. So that's now in place.
So it had not been filed when we were presented with this?
Correct.
Glad we checked.
That was the one item we were looking for, I guess.
In particular, yes.
Yes.
In regards to the waiver request, again, you know, that's the discretion of the commission. And in item three of the criteria that we evaluate is whether there's physical features of the property or its location cause exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship in meeting the requirements of the regulations. I note that there really isn't any physical feature of the property or exceptional difficulty here that, that would prevent them necessarily from complying with the regulations. However, I, I pointed that the existing topographical conditions lend themselves to the use of rain guards to control the stormwater runoff, and sheet flooring it is an acceptable practice. And I could, would note that the town engineer had no, the language they used in their memo was they had no exception with this application, suggesting that there's no issue with the stormwater runoff, because that's what they're specifically reviewing. So aside from that, the application, I find that it's, received the health review, I did also receive staff comment from Bill Mahon, the zoning official, indicating that it complies with zoning. So while that report did come in after the public hearing, he is staff, I believe that can be submitted.
I want to just check out the waiver one more time.
So read the design report, I, I'm not sure, he, it was a cover letter, I think it's Exhibit B.
I'm just gonna pull up our materials from last meeting. I don't know if you're able to do that there, too.
Oh, they disappeared.
Yes, they did. Hmm.
Why would? My apologies, it's like.
Was it ever listed in the?
Yeah, we, we had all.
I don't recall them being there last time.
Oh, you know, I did not.
Through October, maybe for previous month?
It would be, yeah, I didn't, they might be under here.
I'll see it in September.
No, it's not in September. In the last meeting, I didn't have things uploaded to the website.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so my bad.
But we did see the site plan, and I just wanted to review that one more time because I am, it's, I don't think it's reflected in the minutes, which is not a knock on the minutes, but I, I recall there being, at one point, some detailed discussion about where the easements were located. And I can't recall if, if it was this development or a different one where we were kind of hashing out other acreage.
That was the, um, the woman.
Oh, okay.
Her calculations.
Yes.
This here, Scott Road. Excuse me, that one's longer here.
Right. Okay, yes, of all the lots. Right, okay.
So if I, just, while you're looking at that waiver request, in the design report, Mr. Garrity indicates, please accept this correspondence of my client's request for a waiver slash exemption of the stormwater management requirements of Section 6-16 at all of the Eastline subdivision regulations pursuant to Section 6-8-7. I believe the waiver is from Section 6-8-7, which allows you to waive it, but Section 6-16 is not applicable?
I believe, oh. Right. And that was, that's for water?
Correct. That's why I don't think 6-16 is applicable here. 16, but the section that's the waiver would be requested from is 6-8-7.
Which is exemptions on stormwater management.
And then in regards to the legal ad that was published, as it relates to the waiver, we indicate that it was a three-lot re-subdivision of approximately 4.83 acres of land and request a waiver exemption from Section 6-8 of the Eastline subdivision regulations on property located at 117 Scott Road. So I think it's, the whole Section 6-8 would cover.
Okay.
Any waiver that the commission would grant or deny, but I think we're covered there. So while there may be error in reference on the cover letter to the design report.
So 6-8 is primarily all stormwater management?
Correct.
And the town engineer has reviewed this application and does not have concerns?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I thought this was really good, the way you laid this out, Gary, with all the facts and like your summary and stuff. You made it easy to follow.
I would just note that I did have on the conditions.
Right.
About changing, requiring erosion and sedimentation control bond on each lot. Certainly would recommend that. We do have a copy of the deed, and we do now know that the conservation easement has been filed.
Right.
So in terms of two, you could just, I think, just apply, leaving it in there would be all encompassing.
Great.
And then number three, this kind of explains the, the revised plan that was submitted subsequent to the public hearing, subsequent to the close of the public hearing, sorry. But they changed the note in my, the last meeting, I recall, having recommended they remove a note, so they went ahead and did that.
Great.
That being said, I would still indicate that the note be removed, because technically that, you cannot consider that plan.
Right.
It'll be done if.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion on the waiver request. So I'm going to read from our memo, so we can just provide this. The Eastline Planning Commission, based on the record before it and with respect to this application, finds this application to be in conformance with the subdivision regulations of the Town of Eastlime in the 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, as based on the findings included in this document indicated in the memorandum from Gary A. Geishel II, Director of Planning, dated November 13th, 2023. Therefore, I move to grant the applicant's request for a waiver from Section 6-8-7 of the Eastline subdivision regulations.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now, our resolution for the subdivision application is quite lengthy, and I am going to ask if we can verbally present a shorter motion, but provide this copy to our recording secretary for the official record.
Yeah, I, something like, based on the findings in the memo from Gary, Director of Planning, to the Eastline Planning Commission, dated November 13th, 2023, I would kind of read that. You moved to approve the application, known as the application to Kristen T. Clark, Hathaway Farm. I'd kind of read the application name.
Okay. You know what? I could just do it.
I mean, I can read it for you.
It's okay.
I'm not making the motion, but.
I'd say longer.
Someone, if I read it, someone could just say, "So moved." Would that be helpful?
Yes, no, I can read it, I can read it, I can read it. One of my last big acts, as true. That's a joke for anyone in the minutes later. Okay. Based on the findings in the memorandum from Gary A. Geishel II, Director of Planning to the Eastline Planning Commission, dated November 13th, 2023, I move to approve the application, known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for Hathaway Farm LLC, for a three-lot re-subdivision of approximately 4.83 acres of land, and request for a waiver exemption from Section 6-8-7 of the Eastline subdivision regulations on property located at 117 Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut, assessor's map 35.0, Lot number 23-4, also known as the Hathaway Farms subdivision, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements and required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application. One, an erosion and sedimentation control bond for each lot in an amount satisfactory to the town engineer and planning director, and in a form acceptable to the Town of Eastline Planning Commission, shall be posted with the town prior to the start of any site work, including but not limited to clearing, grubbing, filling, and grading. Two, copies of all deeds and easements, including instruments proposed to be executed or delivered after approval of the application, shall be submitted as specified in Section 4-2-10 of the regulations, and provided to the planning director and town council for review and approval prior to the filing of the subdivision on the land record. Three, that the open space notes be removed from the original application re-subdivision plans, revised plans entitled Hathaway Farm Re-subdivision of Lot 3 and Lot Line Revision of Lot 3, property of Hathaway Farm LLC, Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut, dated September 7th, 2023, and revised through October 12th, 2023, prepared by John Paul Marine LS of Gerwick Marine LLC, and submitted on November 9th, 2023.
Stop. Sorry. Just, you can stop, you.
Full stop.
Yep, full stop, just, you don't need that November 9th part.
Period. Four. Thank you. The applicable items shall be accomplished prior to the filing of the subdivision on the land records or other documentation of planning approval, and no further site work shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. This approval is specific to the application known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for Hathaway Farm LLC, for a three-lot re-subdivision of approximately 4.83 acres of land, and request for a waiver slash exemption from Section 6-16 of the Eastline subdivision regulations on property located at 117 Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut, assessor's map number 35, Lot number 23-4, also known as Hathaway Farms subdivision, and the re-subdivision plans entitled Hathaway Farm Re-subdivision of Lot 3 and Lot Line Revision of Lot 3, property of Hathaway Farm LLC, Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut, dated September 7th, 2023, and revised through October 12th, 2023, prepared by John Paul Marine LS of Gerwick Marine LLC. Any changes in the subdivision plan shall require approval from the commission and/or the Director of Planning. Any change in the development plan layout other than those identified herein shall constitute a new application. The owner applicant shall be bound by the provisions of this application and approval. That is my motion. Would anyone like to second it?
Second.
Well, thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good. Maybe not a unanimous approval. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have some zoning referrals.
Yes. I think these will be relatively quick. The first one up is, what is it, 24, Section 24?
Site plan review requirements. So it looks like we want to add some requirements encouraging the planting of native pollinator species.
Correct.
Which is great. So the recommendation, we, we have it in our packets, but it cites that pollinators are critical to our ability to grow food, and that pollinator populations have been in sharp decline due to habitat loss and pesticide use. We've got some educational programs going on in town, and as a municipality, we should utilize best practice organic methods in native plants for landscaping. And to encourage the growth of roadside wildflowers, where possible, in parking lots, roadway, and cul-de-sac islands should be planted in lieu of pavement. Town properties could be made available for beekeeping. For those homeowners whose residential lots do not allow beekeeping as an approved use. So, oh, that is, I just read the part about the P O C D, I was like, why is that sounding so familiar? Because we wrote that.
Yeah, so based upon that, what you just stated, looking at the proposed amendment, it would require that only native plant species be used in commercial development and new construction, as well as any redevelopment. So that's, that's important. Again, focusing on pollinator pathways, as well as greenways, that also require the maintenance of this landscaping and the replacement of vegetation, as has been approved on the site plan. I think that's important as well, as I've seen in the past, you know, the site plans expire, and you get into this back and forth with an association, and get kind of difficult there. As well as some changes that would require any outdoor lighting to be basically full cutoff, to reduce skyglow. So here, they're requiring that the plans be designed to follow the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, the I E S, Lighting Design Handbook. That is the standard in which we recommend, or tend to recommend, follow. Again, they support the full cutoff type fixture. So I think overall, it's relatively consistent with the P O C D, and that's what we're trying to encourage.
I would agree.
Yeah, me too. I accidentally read that.
Thank you, thank you for reading the research. Save that some time.
Any discussion?
This is a good one.
Ellie.
Easy.
Yeah, great. Someone throw a motion out there?
I have to submit a motion that the Eastline Planning Commission finds a proposed text, text amendment referenced above, consistent with the Eastline 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development. Only a few reasons, or just?
I think we could just leave it there.
Okay. Yeah, only if you found it inconsistent, but I think you want to really provide specific reasons. But if there is a section of the P O C D that you'd like to reference for the zoning commission, I would certainly happy to add it.
It's consistent with Chapter 2 Agricultural Resources Subjects in 2.7 Recommendations.
Yeah, great. Awesome. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. That is a good one. Okay. What's our next one?
Well, it's just as good, I think. I don't know. It's more subjective. But the next one is an application of the Eastline Zoning Commission to amend Section 34.21 and modify Section 34.3. The purpose, and adding Section 34.6.1.1, the Flanders Village District. So what I came up with is in Chapter 8, the Commercial Industrial Development, Section 8.2 Recommendations, number 8 states that consider a rezoning of the current Flanders Commercial District on Boston Post Road from Trestle Field Road to the west, to the west, sorry, as a CB, or given a new designation such as Flanders Village District. So with the regulations that encourage redevelopment to improve upon the village concept, I the regulations that encourage redevelopment to improve upon the village concept, I think that these proposed regulations are going to do just that. Essentially, it takes the architectural design review that's applied in the CB zone in downtown and applies the same to Flanders Village. If you take a look at what was submitted, it does describe that area and the extent of it. And it's essentially the bulk of the commercial district there. So I think it is in keeping with the plan of development.
Yeah, this goes back to a couple of plans of conservation and development.
Yeah. I, I would add that more specifically, there are areas within Flanders that we even point out as potential historic type districts, not that they had the potential for it. I don't know that, we'd have to evaluate the buildings there and even see, like, are they, how historic are they? And could we even create that district? And do we want that district even? But I think in either case, the town still has the philosophy of preserving historical homes and structures, whether or not we create that district or have that ability.
Okay. So that we can start discussion, I'm going to go ahead and move that the Eastlime Planning Commission finds the proposed text amendment consistent with the Eastlime 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, and that we can cite chapter eight and the recommendations included in chapter eight as evidence of its consistency, so that we would support the Flanders Village District, Design District.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Move into a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that was all of us, so I don't even need to ask for abstentions or anything like that. Okay. So we have municipal referrals.
Yeah, I think these are just somehow, these sections, again, the text amendments, zoning regulations, that was last month. And again, of course, I'm not sure why those got.
Does not change.
They were supposed to be deleted.
Yes. Okay, great. They were looking very familiar. We do not have any old business, but I do see that the 2024 calendar has been released. And did everybody get one?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent.
So I do need a motion to approve that calendar.
We do need a motion to approve the calendar. Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I submit a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-four calendar.
Second.
Great. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Excellent. Another unanimous decision of four. Okay. Anyone want to take us home here?
I'm going to turn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.